Can you have what your card? So do you want to look at this? Do you want to look at this?
So I should turn on my camera and then my computer?
Alright. Tonight, the honor of the left retirement class, three of our employees. The first is Dana Pauling, she is a senior type. She has been in the district for about 25 years. We are very, very grateful for all of her assistance and her smiling face and her ability to help everything. So we are very grateful for everything she's done for our faculty, our principals, our students. We wish her well. Our next, um, retired faculty goes to Jamie Murphy. She's an English teacher in high school. And she has been working with our students and other faculty members for 20 years. And again, we're absolutely appreciative of her dedication, our students, our families, and the success we're experiencing. So we're very grateful for Jamie Murphy and Amy Solash. And last is Karen Bureyette, she is also an English teacher in the high school. She's been at our district for 18, 2018 years. She is a renowned educator, teachers, and we are very, very grateful for everything that she's done for our students, our faculty, our families, and we wish her well and hope she enjoys the retirement and hopefully everything else all great. Our audit report from our 2000, 2003. I just get it out of the way.
I talked to him before, he was connected when I was in my office. Um, let me double check.
I guess we, I don't know if you have the ability over there to unmute him or not? Let's see, I can't be able to put what he is. Well, well, maybe.
He's not on, I don't see him.
He was originally scheduled for next session. We have to, we can't change the audit, but I'm going to get on it. We can ask him like questions about the audit. He was originally going to come and look at her. Well, that's been a bit much to get in here. Because we are not doing the audit. But again, if it's a free audit, it doesn't matter what age he's got. So we have to dump the audit by October 15. And I don't know, so. Do we want to?
I think he hasn't come back since last month.
Yeah. Jay, do you want to tell Mike? We've got him next month, we've got him at person here. Do you have any news for us, Joey?
15 minutes, I can't access it.
So if Mr. Boris does contact us, we will go after the presentation. So moving on, we will go to the fourth. Superintendent schools, do they actually have our course?
Really, just quickly, two again items that may catch your attention. One is our school safety officers. Just a little background, New York State Education Department gives us a $100,000 community schools allocation, which can only be used for certain needs. Over the last six years, I think we've used that money for a school resource officer, or one school resource officer, costing them about $94,000, if or taking. We've been able to carry two former school resource officers. One retired from the police department, one retired from the sheriff's department, as school safety officers for two thirds of the cost of the one. So we're getting two school safety officers more or less than the one school resource officer. So I know that we benefited from these two people being on site. It helped with traffic safety, come on ahead. We're assigning them, again, make sure the place is locked down. But they even brought home kids that had COVID symptoms. You know, put the mask on, an N95 mask on, got in the car, brought kids home. So they're a great resource for a lot of different reasons here. Again, it's less than what we are paying from the sheriff's department for one. Difference is, right now, we don't have a safety vehicle out front and they don't carry it. So that's good. The other one, the other position that may catch your eye is we have a recall for Nick Pepe. The reason why that is unique was we had tried to take two positions, two admin positions, and move them into one position. And we weren't successful finding the right applicants, the administrative applicants for that position. The work still needs to be done, to be done well. And if it isn't done well, we would have significant liabilities. And we wouldn't be able to recoup over, last year, over, well over $300,000 in reimbursements. So Nick is coming back and going to do two thirds of what we were posting before. He will not be assigned the AIS side of that, of that position. But they'll have some holding duties, they'll have 504, do 504 meetings, IEP meetings, homeless liaison, homeschool coordinator, foster care coordinator, and probably four other things that the state will need to have. Next, again, you have. English, the ELL, that's another. And how many ELS do we have this year? Ten. So we never had that until one or two, maybe, here first here, keeps crawling. They come in even sometimes. So those are just two items that will, that may cover. That's what I have.
I have one question, if you don't mind. For the two SRO officers, are they assigned to a specific building or control all four?
Yeah, so we, the question, we talked about that today, administrative team meeting. They are to control all four buildings. And assigning them specific times to come ahead on a six day, a six day cycle. So it's not like tracking every Monday and Friday. So it's every day, Tuesday, you know, whatever they end up paying, you're, you're working out on that, right? And then they've already been over to come ahead and help with the traffic safety issue. They'll be assigned to all four, the ELS come ahead. Yeah.
Are they, are they licensed or certified in that specialty or?
Yeah, so, good question. So Jamie Edgery was our school resource officer here for two or three years. Retired from the sheriff's department the month the North guy came back. I don't think he has the school safety officer training. He is a, he has the school resource officer training. Pete Williams, this retired city police officer, was here as, I used to call him utility. I don't know his title, I've been monitored or whatever. Then he left and went to City of Plasmer, to be City of Plasmer's school resource officer. They got rid of their school resource officers. But he finished up the training for, is it peace officer? See, the school safety officer, peace officer. He's just finishing up that, that training. So that is a training that the city, it's not training that we're requiring, but it's a training that the city, the city PD required that he had, a city SRO. Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Um, we asked this business manager, John Fung, did you have anything to do with that?
Mike is rebooting, sending to lockback, and it's not letting him in, it just be city. I asked him to join. So if you want to shut it down, I'll let him.
Happens to everybody sometimes.
He really wants to get it done, so I think.
Okay, I think it's about to get a little start, right?
So, other than the audit, which went well, we had a quick audit, quick audit. Everything was very good, classroom was good, class, John funds, everything was good. So, I mean, we're just doing it every day. Drive right now. That's nice to hear.
Next, is equity issue, student board of flex.
My fellow students are happy to be on campus after a brief holiday, students are happy to be here. We could have done something more, social distancing and hygiene, and safety precautions are always priority. Teachers continue to use platforms while in person, show great transition, needs remain to promote. The half day in-person experience for elementary students started last Monday. Both Beacon Town Elementary and Columbia Elementary students were able to meet their future classmates face to face. Students played on the phone, and this was a chance to perhaps receive extra help in academics. Students were able to name up their male colleagues, teachers reported all of them, students were happy. The scholastic look there will continue this year in digital format. Language media specialist, Manny Bishop, and the new Jim Javet have arranged for this event, event to be all online, starting November 2nd. Proceed from the sales room to our, to our school library, it's open. It's the end of the five week mark, progress reports will be sent to home parents on October 16. Teachers will be sharing grades collectively, as well as evening to elementary volunteers, a local person. So we're beginning on elementary, and we're going fully back, full on in-person, constructive. Students are back to their teens, and the weather has qualified for outdoor special, and classes as well. The Beacon Town volunteer private department delivered by accident, so speaking to our students. Due to our current conditions, our required curriculum for the month is being done at the time of this year. The department has done an excellent job and put together various future videos for our students to watch with teachers throughout the month. Who may have seen this on YouTube last week. This works great for our education, as well as other school students. Awareness is very player convention classes throughout the month of October. Students and teachers are like other nights, developing the changes and expectations in places. The middle school. Beacon Town Middle School was designated as CFDS, which is a college for the student learning pathways. School of the same genre for the 20 years, and 2020 upcoming year. Our fellows there, and community of coaching classes here, Mallory, Calhoun, and in Bradford, are our million pathway fellows. They're so sweet, I love them. I get something with them for peer connecting, and they're these sweetest. They are partnering with us and working with our students in third grade, creating and exposing them to college and career pathways, helping them develop skills such as pressure. Pressure beer is help us succeed. This is just a sample of what we're really doing throughout this year. Virtual Career Hour, this will be done on a monthly basis with a different focus every month. Kids can attend the live session or watch our program anytime. We'll have a panel of professionals talking about their careers and pathways and their passions, students may have. The first career hour was in environmental hour, where the core of our headquarter is interested in watching more teachers to show their classes. We will also have a lot of activities at all of this as well. Classroom connections, for our family, we'll be providing the middle school classroom, providing supplemental information on college and career pathways, related to current leaders in the process, adding CFDS pathways, with their work. Working on essential skills, most students can tell you what essential skills are in their definition. Brock and Mallory work with students to identify how to use these skills in their daily classes and other activities. Technical skills can be taught and will work for having these skills and will be successful. Lots of students have done their activities during the advisory, but we will continue that for major actual students. Mentoring, which is one of the things that I do with them. I mentor a bunch of middle school kids, and then a couple of the veterans who needed help around. I help them around, where they, where they need to go, we had, we had loved them, they were also cute. CFDS, this team that was sending hotspots through Coxian, Vaxton College, and Millburg Athletics, to provide a comprehensive mentorship for our students to build their whole platform. This will occur in place of monthly, available to 50 to 75 students. Our A5C, we can tell middle school participate in a whole week, there's a mention, and it's bad. But they were volunteers from Colgate, Comhale, and virtually with 12 conference speakers, scholars in New York and Florida. Sales students logged onto the event during advisory, almost every member participated. Though all of the events will impact the related essential skills on requirements, on job discretions, and current decisions available at all meetings. There are also team during. CFDS has two hotspots and a teaching department to provide two hours a week of subjects specifically to regular students who are tested. Their proximity of their students participating in the virtual community, to their current practice. This week, our resident counselor, Tom, started to go into advisories, facilitating classes of stress and stress management. And the next will be going, uh, spiritually, the last week of October, and they didn't keep. A couple of the setting aspects that we're taking into place in our high school are re-providing 36 days to be made, fun to participate with in school, SAT on Wednesday, October 4th, by date of March 4th. This is a great opportunity for us, as we have not been able to participate in activities since February, to prepare that. This is crucial for students who want to be engaged with early disabilities process for college admissions, as well as creating a recipe for their future, future, leading for mixed systems. The point five in-person virtual student experience started last week and continue today. Students are invited into the LGI with their ears to have opportunities to each other, both being provided by in-person, often area instructional teachers, as well as individual academic and socia- social, emotional support and community development. Our seniors specifically engage in college applications and admissions. College application, essay creation, and additional college opportunities, working with their counselor. Any community calls, with shared needs, college credit, literary registration, can be done at the high school. The high school has 19 students currently registered and receiving college admitted, but following important. English, Constitution, Capitalism, Bible, Americanism, Introductory, Aut- Autodidalism, Drawing, Nature, Greek Alph, Government, Politics, America, History of America, History of the United States, Elementary, French, Spanish, General Physics, Biology, and Physics and Science. Beacon Town High School also has about 15 students enrolled in advanced placement college degree courses, such as AP Bible, AP Calc, AP, AP Calc PC, AP English, Twitter, and Common. AP Stats, and AP World History. Currently here in the process of obtaining student payment for exam participation. Currently have just under 28% of these students pay with a deadline, not until November 30th. I'm one of the ones who's paying for this. I think it's me, I have a little history here, I would continue to provide excellent high quality education experiences very simple at times for our students and families.
Very nice. Moving on to community reports, it looks as if the audit committee may be the only committee. What, we met on September 30th. We met with Jen Stahl, Jen Hartman, Mr. Mannix, and the audit committee. Also, Mike Boris from Boris Wood and CTA were, was in attendance, and he gives an explanation of our audit report that he will be talking about tonight, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But we're really happy with the results. As a district, we've been really, really consistent in our audit reports, and that's absolutely excellent. Alright. The audit committee also reviewed and discussed the June and July 2020 financial reports, as submitted by the treasurer. Ms. Stahl gave us a brief review of financial, update of the capitolary surplus for 2019, 2020 year. This was due to university rate for the meal delivery, delivery during COVID-19, school culture. Discussion was also had on the changes to the summer food service program due to COVID-19. Discuss the conversion of a bus to a mobile delivery vehicle, grant carrier funds, the discontinuation of ELT grant, and how to continue supporting programs. And we will be meeting again at the end of October. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. And a second? Second is Christian. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? No abstain? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and final four recommendations dated 10, 13, 20. May I have a motion, please? Was that Pauline? Or, oh, no, thank you. Second? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. No abstain? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, roll, I'm sorry, recall, preferred eligibility list, okay. Voting, voting, this, retirements, and unpaid leave of absence, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please? Pauline, may I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? And there's none. All in favor? No abstain? Resolution passes. Page 18, 13. Resolution. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, retention, disposition schedule, building level, emergency response plan, district reopening plan, election, school agreement, employment agreements, school safety officers, and memorandum of agreement with intent, support staff association, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Kathy, the, the use of district facility, the, the resolution number H?
Yes.
Is it, that's use of district? The use of district facilities would be included in that, number eight?
Number eight. All on the X sheet. Okay. Alright, including H, use of district facility. Alright, do we have a motion, please?
Oh, motion.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. And Chris? Any questions or discussions? In the term? All in favor? Aye. No abstain? Resolution passes. Page 10 of 13. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, and audit report, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Both.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Douglas Bebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Haggardon?
Yes.
Ed Marin? Christopher Micho?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Kuhmore?
Yes.
Mark Sian?
Yes.
Colin Stone?
Yes.
And just, moving on to additional items, which is page 11, a question.
Just really quick, it was already brought up, but right in front of Kathy, where Ed was sitting, is the school distinction banner that our middle school won this year, that was provided by CFDS from Pathways. And the district goals, if you remember, you already approved the district goals. Now, I'm not asking you to approve the action steps and strategies, but I'm asking you to look at those, and give me feedback on those over the next month, and we would adopt the whole package in November, or discuss how we want, how we want to know that. But it's now in your court, so to speak. There, we may be larger adjustments, I did, is, goal four is brand new, so there's a lot of unknowns as we go through that process. But we will put some of that in this.
I'd love to add something to miscellaneous, I just wanted to get everyone a, a heads up that we've got our superintendent evaluation too, in November. We'll be using our super eval again, so just keep in mind that everybody's about to hit the mouse.
So that's. It's true, more policy. So we'll go, we'll move through the November meeting, and then that will open up a super eval between the November, all throughout the month of November, and maybe we'll finalize it. it in December. Have a final.
Do we need to go back into?
We do not.
All right. Do we want to do more, more?
It's here.
I can't get through, well, it's not to get through anything.
But if you get outside to get through, it's, you can be able to get in here.
Well, I'm concerned that whatever virus going on, maybe someone likes them. That's why I'm not getting. Because he can't, he can't.
It won't matter.
I don't want to, if you don't phone, the phone won't, it won't work.
I just wanted to move it to the whole board management. At parent square every day, text messaging, email, and everyone gets the COVID questionnaire. And I just want to bring it up that if you cannot pass the COVID questionnaire, you should not be attending the meeting or coming on to campus, coming on campus until you can provide proof that you do not have COVID. Which I am glad to tell you that I passed my COVID test. I know last night, I'm ready for it, but you can still attend the meeting, you just don't have to complete. And, but that does mean that you don't put your toes on campus for any reason. And I know it's unusual to think that, being that we're not faculty members, that that applies to us, but if we come on campus, it applies. So it wasn't that bad. And I'm like, it was awful. And I hope I never, ever, ever have to do that again.
Before being initiated.
Before being initiated. Yes. The consequence is worse.
It's much worse.
But I don't think my eyes stop watering.
Did they say it on both sides?
Oh, yes. Oh, oh, yes. And they don't tell you that, by the way. Absolutely torch you one side, they go, okay, let's do the other.
Oh.
Yeah, that was actually one as well.
I got tested for WOOPA and they said the same thing, but I didn't have it all on one side. But I felt like they put my brain out with them.
Okay, I'm telling you. Terrible. I felt like it was the world's longest Q-tip rubbing the back of my eyes. And then I had to willingly let them do the other side. It was not pleasant. But I think, I think they're very, they were, they were kind, they were gracious. They were, they didn't mess around. They didn't waste time. It was.
Have it down on the base. Can I corrode or is it?
It's connected. It's connected to our.
It's really good.
But it's, it's not, it's on the side where the. See, they damaged my brain.
Oh, they stopped doing it at certain other labs and they concentrated, they're concentrating there. So that's why I was curious. That's.
Yeah. So it's towards the airstrip. That, that whole tiny section of Connecticut. I will say it's a five to seven day response, but they were quick. So you go online, you get your justice. So I was really hoping it was a rapid test, but unfortunately it was not. That was very poor of the. Yes. You stopped supporting them. I really, you know, I just wanted to like talk into a tradition and have it be a day, but it's not one going on.
He cannot log in.
He cannot log.
It just spent, I'm, there's God is in power, stuff they shut down. He's not going to make it through. So he said, we started the next one.
So is there anything else that needs to be added?
I think the reopening plan was posted on our website. We posted on our website right in the middle of page one. We put all the charts, flow charts and everything up front. It was a great plan and now it's amazing. If this stuff is amazing, it's amazing.
Who will be out there personally work hard for that? And tell something happen to this.
It, it changes every day, so this is the plan for now.
All right. See, there's no other questions or additional? All right. May be resolved, board of edu-, oh, no. May be resolved, the board of education adjourn this meeting at?
Get to, for, for ten?
Over, not like that, into executive session. So we get to skip that. All right. To make the result of the board of education adjourn this meeting at 6:59. And motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, thank you. Resolution passes. Thank you so much.
If you guys are leasing going.